...month of Women's Month, we all rise in singing the national anthem and I'd like to ask all to take off.
We are going to start today's wonderful, wonderful day in this month with what our country's national people share. And I want it all to start and that the men and women have their own little hoedies and hats of...
Good morning to you all on this month and let me take the first opportunity to say to all the women Happy Women's Month!
Good morning and welcome here with us our month of the day.
It's a month that we remember played by women in the fight against colonialism as well as in the fight regime during our struggle for liberation. And this month we therefore those ordinary women that played a significant about in our communities and in our cities and the beautiful provinces and affected the next change in this Republic of South Africa.
Let's see who played in the freedom of our beautiful land, of colonialism as well as of the British apartheid regime that played a very important role in our houses, colonies and the specific land for us to be free. Everyone who played our role, we all thank them. We are every single woman, everyone who plays our role in this land to be free and he can play. Thank you.
Very happy as day when you speak, you acknowledge those women in this and in this part of our country that we are heroes in ushering difficult dispensation.
So a specific village as parliament will see us today is very glad and we will also as these women from here in this specific community today will also can be thanked and thanked by its speech for the land so rich and free.
I've already taken the opportunity of introducing my how introduce the member of parliament that with us on these public hearings. We are committee of agricultural and reform and rural development serving and we are a party delegation.
So I have already said myself before, but I also have to meet the committee specifically for the development of the ground, land development committee who are here to talk about the public right, and it will also be mentioned later on in the...
To my right, it's honorable Clape, a member of the portfolio committee.
Parlement Clape, a local committee.
Next to honorable Clape, it's honorable Mbaba who also is a member of...
He is sitting at my right, it's Parlement Mbaba who is also a local committee.
Honorable Mbaba in the Eastern Cape province and honorable Clape.
Parlement Mbaba who has come in... Nordwes.
And honorable Mama Chlof in Popo province.
Parlement Chlof from the Limpur province.
Next to honorable Mubi, honorable Masipa who has not yet joined us.
Long Parlement Ma- 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 Chlof is honorable Masipa who was also here before us, but he is here with us now.
We have then honorable Lamini coming from Natal.
Parlement Lamini from Quasire Natal.
Then we have...
Parlement Clape from the Ouska province.
Then we have the honour hailing from East State province.
Parlement Mathias from the Free State province.
The portfolio committee, we are also accompanied by half of our parliament who are here with us. From the secretariat, we have Yamza.
We also have the parliament personnel who has supported the committee on this and we are there...
Pumla Yamza.
Pumla Yamza.
Then we also have Albetina Kakaza with us.
Also from the secretariat of Kakaza.
From the content advisor, we have Ummam Kache.
Here is Ummam Kache.
Then we have research Ummam Teka.
Also Pepe Teka.
Pepe Teka.
Pepe Teka, Pepe Teka.
Then next to the door there, it's Kwabe.
Leader, Parlement Kwabe.
Who is also the research...
No, the researcher is for the committee.
Yes, I'm calling her honorable because I am lame and as depicted in that movie we watching.
I call Kwabe because he is busy looking and there Kwabe is specifically named in this region.
Have our content advisor, Dr. Manen.
Is it our internal advisor, Dr. Manen?
And we have supporting staff that are here with us to make sure that everything that recorded for us to show that able to make their oral submissions today.
Then we also have our team with us today who will be well regarded and that it will be fast read.
Parliament's language services, we have our interpreters that will make sure English we speak is very understandable in Africans and the Africans use standable in English.
Together with us is also parliamentary people who are going to make sure that the African is understandable for our parliamentary leaders and that the English that they speak the word is then again understandable for an African community.
But Women's Month, if you speak in your mother tongue, we live a 12 official languages. So you can speak in any of 12 mother tongues you wish to utilize. Have capable interpreter that will make your mother tongue understand.
All and that it is a woman's month because we are separated from each other. We have 12 different languages in this land and here are very, very rich people. It will also be able to understand African or English.
From our who have our paparazzi present here that are taking all the photos and the record make sure that not parliament of the Republic of South Africa.
That your paparazzi here who are all well regarded and that will also be sure, you can be sure that definitely will be standing for the rest of the world to see.
You see the phone and she is making sure that you are all recorded.
Understand who is going to make sure that they are all well regarded and that they can see.
Me also in division as well as the public relations as you can see full parliamentary and parliamentary colours.
That is of course our voice, the people who make sure that the tourists function here and it all can hear. It's what you can see, it's very clear, our public attention here. It is parliament sitting here, you can see that all our things are here, it is good and it will be well regarded as this parliamentary person is.
Also like to acknowledge races and household services will make sure that we are able to conduct our public hearings.
I would also very much like to... For our people who make sure that our animals, that we can be sure that the animals will walk.
We have from the department of agricultural government officials from the national department and the provincial department.
I would also like to give recognition to the leaders of the department that is here. I would also like to welcome them and give recognition.
Now, I need to invite the municipality as the mayor has tendered an apology as he is dealing with us here. I believe it was Alexandra who's the whip as well as Obri Klasen who is a councillor. Invite them us all gather here this morning.
I would like to give the municipality's opinion, also the mayor...
Koos Alexandra. Mayor Koos Alexandra.
Because the city manager cannot see us, we are invited. Alexandra? Are you invited?
Good morning, the parliament that is here has learned that you can be here. My greeting is also for morning for all here in this place. He always goes here in Kalfinia to come here. But for morning, I know this is important, you come here 80 years ago, coming here to the land. Also in Kalfinia so that the parliament is always here and is for us a priority. And there I would like to give a greeting to the parliamentary committee, very welcome here.
This is for us, thank you so much. Please grant me the opportunity to welcome the parliamentary committee, welcome you. We are honoured to have you so much that you are here with us today. You are basically like it comes or goes. So we are honoured to have you in our municipal area.
Yeah, to begin with, the leader of the parliament today, welcome here to today's meeting, welcome to Kalfinia.
I grant with opportunity once again, each and every single member that is here today and also all this staff here with us today, very welcome in Kalfinia.
I would also like to give a greeting to the departments of Landbau and Ground Deformers in Kalfinia.
Want to welcome all the sisters in the departments that are here today with Department Land Reform. Welcome to this meeting.
Good morning, welcome here, Obri Klasen, Palms, Raatsle Palms and Raatsveifer. And Raatsle Franshoar who is today's team.
I also would like to extend my members that are here with us today. All the names were mentioned, it was quite fast, Palms I remember quite well and all the other members of this come to this meeting.
I would like to give a greeting to the Landbau community area, very welcome here in this place.
I also want to extend a warm welcome to the people in this public meeting.
I would also further the place of honor, very welcome here in this place.
Also grant me the opportunity to please the leaders of this public hearing.
Let the people of Kalfinia and also the surrounding villages, very welcome here in this place. And from here in this place, we say to say in this community what we have here today about the conservation is part of us being in South Africa and in the antarode.
Please, last but in the least, all the members of this community that are here today to us that you are here and that you opportunity to voice your voice and to say yourself in your district adjacent and also in Antam with regards to the conservation of agricultural land. Thank you so much for being here.
And the speaker who is today's team is not here, in this place. To this meeting, we can talk and let all the community members talk about what we should do. And I would like to say the way of Kalfinia, what so well played in this place. I know both of you, the way was very friendly, thank you.
Then also welcome to all of you and either of Kalfinia for playing along and having such a wonderful day because I know that the weather wasn't always that friendly to you on your travels to come to this. Thank the mayor in their absence to give us the opportunity to be here today to voice our opinions and to say our say.
Thank you very much.
Bye, thank you.
Thank you. Sorry. I would not, I would not only criticize the councillor and the speaker, they are busy with other commitments which are not related to today's day and so is Alexander, the chief, who has said that it is very important for parliament to us to learn what we said, mainly on ground, to speak.
Thank you. I just once again want to thank and to apologize the mayor and the chief whip in their being here that they take care of. But again, again to the parliament and to the community extend a plea to you to make use of the opportunity where the parliament is here today to voice regarding agricultural land comes into play. Thank you very much.
I just thank the municipality whip and councillor, Mayor Koos Alexandra and Obri Klasen.
I would like to give Mayor Koos Alexandra and Obri Klasen, thank you for the very, very welcome that he has given us in this place today.
Mayor, parliament didn't come to the people in 80 years. Many of attest to seeing this before.
And Mayor Alexandra, I can assure you that every 80 years, I can, I can see what he sits, can tell from it.
You can see that we are true representatives of the people and the people. What we do is informed by the citizens of the republic.
Team workers, the people from South Africa, in our public and we are here for the team workers in the public and for all of South Africa.
This sixth parliament, I can indeed assure you can time coming here as I've been here when we were dealing with section 20 of land without expropriation of land without compensation.
This is my second time here, the first time I came here was with Article 25, which is done with the union and of ground.
And it is God that all what we do as parliamentarians must be at the...
As parliamentary leaders, I would assure you that the work that we are here in our city is being done for the people and the citizens of this land.
For here on the present development of agricultural land, which is also known as pedal bill, which here this morning introduced to land reform and rural development and was further referred to challenge reform and rural development on the 2nd of February 2021.
The new technology of the way of the conservation and development of land, land building ground also known differently as the law regulation, is also under the ground union, under the rego- regulation or land development, and we must make sure that it will end 2021.
The Bill 6 to promotion and sustainable development of agricultural land South Africa.
This law regulation has the objective of maintaining land development and development.
Currently, the subdivision and use of is condivision of agricultural land act known as SALA of Act number 7, which prohibits the subdivision of agricultural land without the consent of the reform and rural development. Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. I think it's a starstruck moment for me.
This law regulation and from this understanding and land building sector and development of it this law practice develops and it is in step with the ground law of 1970, what it did not do with the conservation and development of land building ground.
Protect albeit to a limited extent the loss of agricultural land to activities as SALA in old 1970 act that is by the national department only and as such does not conform to requirements where national, provincial and local constitutional require states of government have a role to play.
SALA regulation is a regulation of 1970 and this regulation is executed by the governments, the provinces, and so forth. It did not release...
Further, it is only applicable to private with agricultural land reform and rural development from protecting and controlling loss of high value land that is by the state, statutory bodies, communal land and land that is administered.
This regulation does not apply to private, what is private is that this ground that is being built by the government what what is developed can be used for land building.
The bill that brings us here as it seeks to replace the shortcomings of SALA kept the loss of agricultural land in the country, high value of agricultural from further loss and degradation from non-agricultural use by agricultural areas.
This law regulation of conservation and development of land building ground has the objective of keeping what the SALA regulation has allowed. This law is to ensure that building ground... Hier die wetzontwerp om te verzekeren dat po grond beschermd wordt voor activiteiten en dat land gebruikt wordt. Voor specifiek maar voor nieuw landbouwactiviteiten dan nou gebruik wordt.
The proposal intends to help for use of agricultural land for agricultural purpose such as land for human settlement and urban development in line with by the various local.
Zo hier die uh wetgeving, pedal wetgeving, het is ten doel om die grond wat als ook grond wat gebruikt wordt voor nieuw landbouwactiviteiten zoals bijvoorbeeld menselijke in hierder settings te beleen met die werk is en wat voor landbouwactiviteiten ontwikkeld wordt.
implement signed into law is cooperative governance where all spheres of government will have a role to this are expected to develop provincial agricultural sector plans.
Zo wat ook plaatsleken regering plan het bericht raam en om die die wetgeving samen en werken.
The visions for local and provincial governments through the formal structures that will be established mandating them to perform certain functions in the one side.
Wanneer het nou een uh een wet geteken wordt, onderteken wordt het doel om zeker te maken allemaal samenwerken en dat zeker provinciale en municipale areas ook kan die wetgeving dan nou wanneer ontwerp, wanneer het de wet is samen met de werk en te stellen.
In this regard, the government are expected to financial resources, administrative capacity, infrastructure, training, implementation of the bill.
Daar zal ook financiële structieren, skaya mensen in die verschillende regerings structuren zoals municipaal enzovoorts om hier die wetzontwerp te kan uitvoeren.
Public participation, one of parliament's most important functions and of the public in all its processes through various means.
Gedoegegeven wordt. Het is ook belangrijk in de zeepleg van die regering om zeker te maken dat die publiek wet het enige wetgeving in proces wat voorgeleid wordt of wat voorgesteld wordt.
In the case pedal bill, stakeholders within the bill responded to advertised inputs by the and made written submissions to the committee with consideration.
Belanghebben is wat wel rol speelt in die wetgeving of wat het belang heeft in die specifieke reger met geszette wat aan die portefiliel com commenteer gericht is.
However, because of the subject matter of the bill and the various stakeholders that may be impacted once portfolio committee saw the need to extend public hearings to ensure that the proclamation is responsive to the needs of all stakeholders, not in front.
Die portefiliel com commenteer het vader goed om publiek en zet het ook dezelfde wetgeving om te maken dat die publiek en die gemeenschappen zijn rechten niet skadelei met al wetgeving niet.
In this regard, the consultative process was embarked on with the and we have been able to mobilize a number of communities from Lorisfontein, which is hundred and fifty meters away, near Woodville, away, Brantfly, hundred and fifty kilometers and Middle Bos, which is eighty kilometers way to come and participate in public hearings.
To wat ze consultieren, het proces wat plaatsen vindt het met ons kappen. En het is betrekking tot Lorisfontein, het is na vijftig kilometer hier vandaan, Nieuwoudwil wat is tachtig, Brantfly, honderd twintig, middel bos, middel po kilometer, tachtig er evenaf. Allemaal consultierende processen ondergaan zet het te krijgen met betrekking tot hier die wetgeving.
We therefore have two objectives for these public hearings to include stakeholders, the different communities or affiliations to solicit your views and in this regard whatever position of you that you may have on the bill. It's with reasons and tell us whether the bill in its current form will be able to fulfill its intended purpose.
Daar is dus twee doelwetten wat vandaag bij. Het is belangrijk dat ieder iemene lucht en iopinie geeft wat wat ook al dit mag wees. Dat hij voor ons al redes verskappen wil en oftewel al dan nou niet voldoen aan iebehoefte.
ends with certain aspects or clauses of the bill. We will need you to highlight those while also making also on how we address your concerns as a portfolio committee when process.
Belangrijk dat hij voor ons gaan uitleggen waar hij bezorgeren of kommerlei met aspecten dat het voor ons belangrijk wees en waar voor wees en die hij voor ons kan voorstellen en oplossen waar ons hier die wet verbeter.
Also, second objective for these public hearings is standing and status of government in terms of capacity, loss availability in respect of responsibilities and vested in the bill and possible do with existing nation and regulatory frameworks.
Het is ook voor ons bijbelangrijk termen, twee doelwetten is voor ons belangrijk om te verstaan en termen capaciteit. Wat hier die doelwetzontwerp tak en waar konflikt kan bestaan dat dit ook zal uitgelig wordt en uitgeklambaar wordt en onder ons aandacht gebracht kan worden.
Provincial agricultural plans vis a vis the existing provincial special and the implemented legislation such as the spatial planning and land known.
Als een voorbeeld van hier die konflikt wat kan bestaan of die duplicering van zeker de wetgeving kijk ik specifiek naar hier als ook die reintel wikkeling spaas.
Spluma.
Spluma, spluma. Dat moet nou gekijk worden dat het kan worden het hier die wetzontwerp.
Let me highlight to you that parliament is here for you. We are not rushing here to spend this few people of Kalfindia. And we will take through a show of chairs, can you put those chairs as they were Omar? Please put those chairs as they were and find.
Ik wil als parlement, portefiliel com beter dat hier is voor iemene zet het. Daar is geen maas ons gaan naar en zien niet. Portefiliel com is hier van voor iemene om naar ietel te. Oms gaan naar en zien niet. Omar, aan de meeste blieft laat die die middelstoelen. Bye dank.
I will then request through a show of hands, those that were submissions before the we will identify you to the middle and be given each to make your input.
Ik ga nu hier die wijze op gaan als je handvol opstreep een mondelinge inzet dus nu ik zal aan de aanwaard je gaan zitplak inneem in die middel en elk een van zet de lever.
And those that have written submission to bring your written submissions in front to the portfolio committee. We will take those for consideration.
Laagskriftel inzet het, hier is welkom om het na voor te brengen en het voor wij ons in te dienen ons al neem.
We will then take the first hands on this side and hands from this side till we've exhausted everyone in the room who on the bill.
Handen van hand opgesteken is van vrouw om die zitplak ik in die middel in te neem en iemene te luch kan geleendheid geheen ins voortgaan. Tot dat ons allemaal wat weens is uitspelen vandaag te zeggen om te kan praat.
Can we have a show of hands on this side?
De aan die linkerkant, je praat, handen. Op een.
I see men are first on the, I'm looking for women first.
Die man zijn handen opmaakt, zoek vrouwen, is angesinnet vrouwen maant is.
See women on this side that to speak.
Je hebt een gefrinst aan die linkerkant wat graag iets te zeggen.
Agriculture is dominating in the hands of men raising. Uh, okay, let's proceed. There's another hand here, gentleman with the orange jacket.
Ja, meneer met die oranje.
Another gentleman with the black cap. And the other hands will take start the process.
Zo is gaan mensen, vrouwen die proes die gang te zet.
People of Kalfindia, where are the women, the young people, the young people as well.
Jong mensen en vrouwen, waar was julle?
I'm looking.
Kande.
Parliament has not come to three people, we've come to all of you.
Die parlemente die gekomen naar ons het nou allemaal te gekomen wat vandaag hier tenwoordig is.
Come, let's see hands, already standing, please assist there to sit, there's gentleman also. Any more hands?
Nog handen.
We need four more hands to start the process.
Nog vier mensen om die proces in die gang te krijgen, enige iemand wat nog iets wil zeggen.
Any other people that to wait.
Mensen wat graag uit wil leveren, een mondelinge inzet wil leveren wat iets wil zeggen.
Is that all? It cannot be not, parliament does not come to five people.
Zet niet die parlement.
Is that all Kalfindia? Is this all you have to offer?
Kom Kalfindia, is dat al wat julle kan geheen?
Okay, now I can, I'm told that me up.
Nee, ik zie jou, ons waren nog niet op.
We'll use five and we'll take all the hands of women seated here, youth seated here, mass all.
Zo.
So, all the women that are seated here are all going to speak.
Al die vrouwen wat die en waar is die jong mensen, waar is die jong, jullie moeten ook praat.
Oh no, I didn't sing now.
Ik het die geschiede weg had het niet vorig jaar in.
But here's another hand.
I just want to ask something quickly, please.
Yes, please proceed.
My apologies, my apologies. I just want to inform the parliamentary committee, thank you for being nice because I think members are not ready to speak up yet. Is that we are here to listen, have time to prepare to say something. So, uh, my apologies, time to prepare, we're not to make a informed uh oral contribution. On behalf of my fellows, I apologize for that.
No worries, we appreciate that, I must say, parliament that has come to the people of Kalfindia to listen, to listen on your uh that is dealing with the preservation and development of agricultural and have been told that a consultation was had, have a list of areas that this consultation was done. They allude earlier that there was a mobilization and consult process that was as well as a new Brantfly and Middle Post. This consultation was done and engaged on the bill. Having done so, uh, to have this uh public learning skipper's community. So you heard, I spoke of all come from, we left to come and do parliament work because that consultation has been had. Those that still you don't know much on the bill tried at best to plain that we are here to look at how we protect and preserve agriculture, that we are seeing an erosion of on the basis of human sex with housing that is being built. But also with mining activities, agricultural value, including uh those illegal land invasions, start the process at least.